I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome to the April 2nd Select Board Meeting. We have a couple of announcements. The Sustainable Grafton Committee will hold a shredding event this Saturday, April 6th, sponsored by Unibank. The shredding truck will be located at the Unibank branch at 89 Worcester Street. This Saturday is also the day of the bottle drive here at the Municipal Center hosted by Boy Scout Troop 107. The MDI Wayfinding Grant Advisory Committee will hold an ideation workshop at 6:30 PM on Thursday, April 18th, in the Great Hall at Apple Tree Yards. This event is an opportunity for residents to share their ideas about utilizing the $25,000 grant that Grafton was awarded for wayfinding. Grafton's annual cleanup day is Saturday, April 20th. Pick up your yellow bags at the Grafton Highway Department at 64 Old Westboro Road during the week leading up to the cleanup day, or pick them up from the Garden Club at the Common on April 20th from 9:00 AM to noon. I'm gonna, uh, yeah, if you can participate in the cleanup at all, it's a super easy process. You just grab, um, yellow, basically trash bags, you walk down the road, pick up trash, and you leave them right where they're at once they're full, and DPW will come and pick them up. It's a great way to show pride in the town and, um, you know, make the streets look really nice, um, now that it's springtime, so.
Plus you get a ticket for, uh, I think, a free slice or a free kid scoop, or both?
Really?
Yeah.
And some goodies to boot. Alright, so first up, we have no public hearings. Uh, we have a first appointment of an election worker, Frank Hall.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Frank Hall as an election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, by roll call. Mead?
Aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. Alright, next up, we have the Fire Chief Appointment and Auxiliary Firefighter Harrison Lee.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Harrison Lee as an auxiliary firefighter at Station 2.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. Alright, next up, we have new business. Uh, we have an update from Fire Chief Eric Mathieu. So come on up, Chief. Thanks for coming to our meeting.
Thanks for having me. Um, to follow up on that appointment of Harrison Lee, we have, uh, three more coming your way as of this week. So, keep them rolling off. We're going right along with the, uh, um, appointments and recruiting is going great. Um, let's see, a couple of highlights over the last quarter. Um, just recently, we placed a new radio system or radio repeater in service at, um, Wyman and Gordon Company. I don't know if you recall, but the first fire I had as chief was a fire under their 50,000-ton press, and we had no radio communications with the people that were under the press. And that was a little unnerving for me, and...
Father's well.
Um, so, working with Wyman Gordon's, they...
So the repeater allows you to connect to, uh, basically guys on the scene who are working underneath that whole thing?
Yeah, so...
Couldn't before because of the orientation and materials and...
Correct. Um, being a large steel building, um, it basically ate up our signal. We couldn't get out to dispatch and stuff like that. So with the new repeater that Wyman Gordon's, um, actually purchased for us, um, for, you know, our safety as well as theirs, but, uh, that, we tested that the other day. We can talk five stories underground, in an elevator, and we drove throughout the building and tested it in all, everywhere, and we were able to reach dispatch and outside the building without any issues. So, that's been, uh, a long time coming, so...
Understand.
Pretty excited about that. Um, staying with radios, we put 21 new, um, portable radios in service. These radios have the ability to talk to all three different radio bands that are available, so we're able to talk to all of our mutual aid communities now by portable. So when we go mutual aid or they come in, depending on what frequency we're on, we can talk to them, and it allows us to filter down some of our radios to, um, other members, so more members have radios available.
Nice. So presumably that'll help us integrate with the rec.
Yep, yeah, everything we're purchasing, no matter which way the rec goes, as far as a, what, um, radio band we're on, we'll be able to use all the equipment we have still.
Fantastic.
So we won't have to either repurchase or get rid of that, so.
Right.
And those radios were purchased under a state earmark, uh, safety earmark. And I hope you all did your homework. We'll send you a little reading. Um, we put in, uh, a bunch of new SOGs, uh, SOG 16 through 18. I don't want to go through all of them because we'll be here for a while, but, uh, hopefully, uh, you're okay with what you saw on those.
Sure, is there anything that you wanted to highlight or anything that the board wanted to cover in terms of? Thanks for sending them to us in advance. It was, uh, it was a lot, but it was...
Oh, yeah. Um, the, yeah, the committee's doing a great job with those, and it's, again, rolling along pretty good, so. No complaints from me. Um, we also, um, came up with a social media policy, and with that, we basically mimicked the Police Department's current policy to keep everybody on the same page, and we knew it was vetted and all that, so that one was, uh, pretty easy to do with Chief Drapos' help, so.
Great.
And then the other paperwork I sent you was, uh, all for the cadet program. All the, the legal paperwork so that, um, the town is protected, the firefighters protected as well as the cadets, and we hope that that'll help, um, getting, getting that program online will help, again, with a little more recruiting and stuff as time goes on, so. I know we're at a high right now, but I'm sure it'll slope off again, and, but that'll give us something to, you know, kinda...
Keep the pipeline full.
Exactly. Um, and the other things that are going on is the Station 2 project, um, revamping that. They're currently working on the HVAC system, and next on the list down there is a new bathroom along with plumbing, and then getting on to electrical, so that's moving right along, thanks to, uh, Mr. Mead overseeing that, so that's going pretty good. But, those are my quick highlights. I don't want to keep you all, I know I had you all reading about us, so. Do you have any questions for me?
I just had a comment, I thought that the social media policy was quite robust, I liked it, so thanks.
I can thank the chief for that, so.
I liked it too, and, um, yeah, I've definitely noticed over the last couple of years, um, you know, both departments have really gotten more active on social media, and I think it really benefits the town to just get that wide variety of communication, um, and see what you guys are up to, and, uh, you know, you mentioned, uh, sort of checking some pumps, and, uh, I know that that was, uh, in all these crazy storms that we've had over the last year. It's been really crazy, just, uh, the volume of, uh, of rain in such short periods of time. It's like these torrential downpours, um, that you guys are available to residents to help out when they do a flooding, so, uh, it's good stuff. Anything else you guys wanted? Alright, alright, great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Do you have votes for those?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see it.
As if they're for the votes, I just want to make sure they get taken.
Sorry, let me pack it up then. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
So I'm just voting in each of these policies?
So, yep, um, SOG 6 through 18 as presented, uh, social media policy, and then bylaws and operating procedures of the Fire Department's cadet program.
Alright, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move that we approve the standard operating guidelines 6 through 18, the social media policy, and the bylaws and operating procedures for cadet program.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
And the motion carries. Alright. Uh, let's see, next up, we were...
With all the reading, I didn't see the motion. In my defense.
There's a lot of material. These guys have been working hard to update that stuff. Alright, next up, we have, um, a consideration to vote to sign the order of taking for the Milbury Street Crosby, Crosby Road Sidewalk Project.
Hello.
Mr. Canoyer, good evening.
Good evening, it's like deja vu. So it's the exact same thing as signed in January. Um, the state has some archaic rule that it has to be recorded within 30 days of the signature. We didn't get the plans from the design engineer until day 32, so. We, and now they require us to revote the same exact thing you already voted on once.
Alright.
So that's it.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the order of taking as presented in compliance with the provisions of Chapter 40 and 79 of Mass General Laws for the Milbury Street Crosby Road Sidewalk Project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. Alright, good stuff.
And the other purpose for my being here, um, we have a, there's a bridge replacement at the Depot Street Sutton Bridge. It's a little corner of Grafton that that intersects with, and part of that is the same process. We need to take some easements from one property owner. Um, the total easements are about 4,000 square feet. In order to complete the bridge project, the Folet Street has to be realigned, and in order to realign it, that requires a town meeting vote for the realignment of Folet Street. It's, we're taking 488 feet of realignment, so really nothing. Um, the total value of all the easements on that one piece of property is $1,400, so it's literally, there's a picture I included, had William will include, include in the packet that shows that it's literally just scrub brush and it's a, a drop to the river anyway. It's not of, the land is of no value. But I just wanted to get it in front of you so you knew what it was when, as you guys are reviewing the warrant for the town meeting, so I don't have to come back since I was trying to kill two birds with one stone. So it's just, you know, it's a requirement for the state in order to proceed with that project, which is scheduled for bidding this year, so that bridge will be closed for probably at least a year for the replacement, so.
Questions?
Did anybody complain? I, I mean, it doesn't look consequential at all.
No, it's actually the...
The pictures and the plans?
The, uh, the owner of the property, everything I've sent to them, I've gotten back. So I'm sending it to the same address the tax bill goes to, which is current, but they're not accepting the things that I send them. So it's been sent registered mail, and I just get the returned things back, so. But it's been the same families owned it for at least 100 years.
Okay.
Going when we did the title search, so it's not, and hasn't developed it, because literally it's, it's the side of the river, it's not, I don't think so.
Alright, thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Yep. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Appreciate it.
Always fun to be here.
Uh, alright, next up, we have, um, a discussion of the Memorial Day Parade.
Hello, everyone. So the Legion, the VFW, and the VAC are working together to plan this year's Memorial Day Parade.
Do you mind just, uh, naming an address?
Oh, uh, Justin Stone, Chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee, sorry. Um, so we're working with the Legion, the VFW this year to start planning the Memorial Day Parade. Wanted to send out an official invite to all of you. We'll send out more details and things, uh, through Sunday a little bit later, but, uh, get some time on the calendar to let y'all know as soon as possible. Additionally, we have the Legion Post Commander Carmen here to talk about a couple of changes that you're gonna see this year and potentially moving forward as well.
Hi, my name's Carmen Paglioni, I'm the commander at Post 92 American Legion in Grafton.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I, I recently went to the Advisory Board and asked if they could give us some assistance on Memorial Day. Our, uh, crew is getting thin over there at the American Legion, as all the Legions are, and the VFWs, uh, just through attrition and people not joining. It's, it's becoming hard to get everything done that we need to get done. So what I'm looking for is, um, some help with prime, primarily, the end of the parade at Grafton Center, as far as speakers go, uh, reading of things about our, uh, our dead from the town that we do on a day, uh, every year, and I've been doing it for the past five or six years, and, uh, I would like to get the town more involved in speaking to the masses that, that go up there on Memorial Day. I don't really think they want to hear from me. I think they would like to hear from maybe the Selectmen or the Veterans Advisory Board on something. We will still get the parade together, we'll still get the fire and squad, and we'll still get the, the vehicles to be in the parade, and a lot of the others, other things that go on there, and I'm dealing with Andy, uh, Kelberg, uh, he's got the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts out to do the flags on the, on the cemeteries and a lot of other things. But I'm gonna need some assistance with getting the buses that meet down at the high school to get the, the band, someone to communicate with the band people, the, at the high school, and get those people all organized a little bit. Some of those things would come away from us, and then we can concentrate on the parade itself. And then when we get to the center of town, be nice if we had some officials from the town speak to the, uh, the people. So, dealing with, uh, Justin and the Advisory Board, we'll have probably three or four meetings before Memorial Day to try to finalize everything, make sure we got all our ducks in a row, and going from there, we can build on that, because the, took a long time. I lived in this town long enough to know when the parade almost went away, and we were able to bring it back, and I don't want to see it go away again. So we need to start sharing some of the responsibility, I think. That's, uh, and I'll deal with Justin over that stuff. Thank you.
So as we get more of the details planned out over the next month, month and a half, I'll keep the Select Board, um, in the loop on this, and if there's any parts of the, the, you know, the speaking portions that we do at the Town Square that you would like to be a part of, please let me know. We also have Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that read certain sections as well, so we'll continue to do that.
Sounds good. Alright. Any questions?
Happy to help.
I'm in.
Yes.
Absolutely, so, I'm sure most of us will be there, we're happy to, um, send a representative to, to make some comments, um, and just thanks so much to everybody who's, uh, done this historically, who keeps, keeps it going. Yeah, it's, uh, it's an important event, and it's a really important recognition of, uh, of the service, um, you know, that we've had, uh, from town residents over a very, very long period of time, so.
Yeah.
Uh, good stuff.
Yeah, if there's anything beyond speaking that you guys need help with, and that, you know, this board can provide, don't hesitate to reach out, for sure.
Will do.
Yeah.
I have, excuse me, I've already, Dave Meridian's already committed to, uh, to being, uh, with us as he does most years because he's from town, and, uh, I understand this year also George Peterson's gonna be here for, uh, his visit, so that'll be nice to see George again too, also, so.
That's great. Alright, well, thanks so much for the update, and, um, please do let us know what you need.
Will do, thanks.
Thanks, Justin.
Alright, we are on to item 4E, which is a administrative matter to refer, uh, some town meeting warrant articles, uh, that pertain to zoning, uh, to the Planning Board, uh, for review and recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to refer all town meeting warrant articles submitted to amend Grafton's zoning bylaws to the Planning Board for their review.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Yeah, uh, Foley, aye.
And the motion carries. Uh, next up, we have a consideration to sign the, uh, Fisherville Dam Contract, oh, I think we're actually...
Yep.
We don't have that contract in hand at the moment, so we're gonna pass that one over. We'll bring that up at a future meeting. Uh, next up, we have the EEOAA policy review.
Yes, if you need one moment, I'll throw that up on the screen.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so in our ongoing project of reviewing all of the town's policies, uh, the most recent one we tackled was the affirmative action policy, uh, which looks like it was last updated in 1991. So we went through, uh, read what the intent of the policy was, and then consulted other examples that could be found through the Commonwealth. So one of the first things we did was update the title of the policy, uh, to cover the equal employment opportunity section of it, uh, which really has more to do with the hiring practices from posting vacancies, conducting interviews, selecting candidates, and things of that nature. We updated the purpose section, uh, just to modernize the language a little bit, make it so it wasn't a message from the Select, the Board of Selectmen that needed to be updated anytime the board changed over. Uh, we addressed the internal and external sharing of the policy, so, in the prior version, it mentioned that it would be posted at the Center Library in town. We may note that it would be on the town's website with the remainder of the policies. Uh, externally, we may note to the town's current practices of using all available resources to ensure that advertisements for positions had the largest reach, reach possible. Uh, that includes using the town website, the Mass Municipal Association website, or any specific disciplined websites, so, uh, like advertising for the library director, we used the Mass Board of Library Commissioners site, and there were a couple of specific ones like that that are available. Recruitment, hiring, and advancement, uh, we completely overhauled. It had some dated language, wasn't entirely up to date with how we handled this process, uh, so we stripped that down and completely updated it to match what the town is currently doing. And then the grievance procedure, uh, we updated that language to reflect the town administrator or their designated, uh, to make it a little bit more concrete about who to go to if we have an issue. That is sort of the overarching rewrite of this policy. I'm happy to answer any specific questions if any members of the board have any.
Alright, I'll open it up to discussion. Uh, I just had, uh, one question, which is, um, so we had a DEI audit, um, over the, I think it concluded last year. I was wondering if, um, we referred to recommendations, um, that came out of that, uh, in particular with, uh, hiring practices, um, so, can you talk about that at all?
Uh, yes, I can. So the DE and I audit, we didn't, uh, refer to in rewriting the policy. We went more by what the town is actively doing. Um, if I recall correctly, the DE and I audit spoke more towards, um, school demographics. I don't believe it spoke to, uh, the hiring process.
Okay.
And if I, if I could, I think that this EEOAA policy is more of a generic 35,000-foot overview policy, and that if we wanted to have more specific pinpoint kind of DEI policy, we would create maybe a, a more focused hiring policy or recruitment policy or something like that, that could really bullet point out concrete steps that we want to take to kind of improve that, as opposed to, these type of policies have that generic language that says we'll do everything in our power to, to attract candidates.
Sure.
And, and to not discriminate and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that if that's, you know, something that the board wants to see us do, then I, I think we would do that as a separate hiring policy, and then have this policy, I know it sounds like government bureaucracy, but have that policy reference
Yeah.
The hiring policy, just to make it a little more fluid.
Okay, makes sense. Alright, yeah, I, um, it's, hiring is one of those, uh, it's just one of those really important activities, um, to, to kind of support the, the DEI and I, uh, principles, I guess. So, and I, I just, I'm aware of how difficult it is in a town like Grafton to actually achieve any level of diversity, uh, because of the candidates that we get, regardless of how or where we advertise. But I guess, I don't know, I, I would be interested if there are models for more specific hiring practices, um, to, to have a policy, um, written up for that, so if, I guess we can, uh, vote on this particular policy and then just take that up as a separate discussion. Any more discussion on this policy than?
Two minor things. Um, nothing of substance, William. Uh, in the first paragraph you edited, uh, it's actually, sorry, paragraph three under purpose, um, says the town of Grafton reaffirms its commitment, and then it's OT instead of TO.
Okay.
Principles, and then there were just, um, on that last page, a few hard returns that were still in there that, um, just kind of broke the paragraph in the middle for no reason.
Okay. I can go in and fix those and send an updated copy to the printer.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to...
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the equal employment opportunity affirmative action policy as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Alright, the motion carries. Next up, we have Select Board Reports.
Mr. Chu?
Mr. Mead?
Um, just wanted to update the board that we had a meeting last Friday with, uh, the Dean of Tufts University, Mark and I, and, uh, and Evan, and, uh, we met with, uh, Rocco, and I can't think of his last name, Evan and Mark, but, uh, and, and another gentleman, and, you know, we had, we had a, a great meeting talking about, um, their pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, uh, and, and I think, I, I can't really explain how the meeting went, the meeting just went fantastic. Couldn't have gone any better. Um, their budget is due to, uh, to their, to Tufts, uh, in October, so we are going back and, and looking at what, you know, what we proposed, and, well, we didn't really propose anything, but we, we talked about some, some different scenarios. They're gonna go back and look at, uh, at what they need to look at, and we're gonna meet again in September, but I, I, I have to say it was a fantastic meeting, it was really, really good.
Fantastic. Any other updates?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jefferson?
Um, Library Building and Planning met, uh, at the end of March to submit, uh, final request, excuse me, submit a request for the final invoice, uh, minus 20,000 that we are withholding, um, from CTA, the, the main contractor on the project, so, uh, that 20,000 go towards any remaining, uh, minor punchless items and updates that, that would, uh, move forward. We're hoping that they'll just, uh, submit payment and we can move forward accordingly. Um, and I see Mr. Robbins in the audience, I hope I'm not, uh, taking the wind out of sails, uh, during Select Board Reports, but, uh, the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, Dave Robbins, uh, and updated its members, uh, that the AG has approved 12 of the final 14 bylaws that were awaiting review. Uh, the remaining articles are Article 22, the Combined Silver Lake, Lake Ripple Guideline, and 28A regarding, um, the Fire Department primarily, primarily the Strong Chief Updates. They... Um, the AG's office extended their own deadline until May twelfth for that. Uh, and all the bylaw updates to date have been approved with no changes.
Fantastic. You know, a lot of work going into those. Any other updates?
I can, uh, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
So, since Ray brought it up, uh, just to echo his sentiments, uh, it did go really well at Tufts University, and I thought three of us worked really well together, uh, to, to, to make that happen, but also the other, the, the folks that were there. There's a good sense of, uh, community and connection between the town of Grafton and Tufts. And the conversation was wide-ranging, but you just, I, I personally left the meeting feeling like there's a good understanding that we are synonymous with one another, and that we will work collaboratively and cooperatively towards a common goal and the greater, and to serve the greater good. These, these are good folks. It was a really good discussion. You're up, so I couldn't agree more with you, Ray. Uh, for me, I did, I wasn't here the last meeting, but I did attend the, uh, Ask Me Anything with some folks that were also here, were also there from this, uh, team. And, uh, one of the byproducts of that, or one of the results was that was, um, one of the homeowners down on Ferry Street engaged with myself and Anne Marie. And we, uh, visited their property. There's some, some of that stuff's been discussed here through some email, and it's in some of the reports with Evan about some of the flooding that's happening. And, you know, it's, it, it kind of stinks, but the good part is, is that the team is on it, you know, the, it was, I, I really felt like the, uh, the homeowner and the other individual that we were, that was there representing the, the neighboring property really appreciated that they had a chance to come out and talk to their representatives. They discussed some of the challenges that they were, they were experiencing. Those representatives went out and visited with them to understand the problem. And now there's obvious, uh, uh, clear and obvious attempts to, to fix the problem across the board too, by the way, and that's, we'll probably get into that in a little bit. So, that was good. Um, and then the other thing is, uh, we visited Snow Road yesterday, just get a peek at that, um, that property and get a better understanding of that. And I always personally, I said this year earlier, Matt, I always personally appreciate the field trips. I like them mostly with Evan, cause you know, we do, and Andy, we do roll nasty together at school. But I learn a lot. I learn a lot, and it's, uh, for the firsthand experience walking those grounds and walking around and understanding, it really, really helps me. So, those are my select board reports.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
So, I've attended the Open Space and Rec Committee meeting, um, that was probably a couple of weeks ago, third Wednesday of this month, maybe that was last week. And, uh, we're gonna come before the board. I coordinated with Amber and Dave and the, and Fiona, the member from CRPC who's been helping us um, create this open space document in terms of prioritizing, um, land for just prioritizing in general for the town. So, I believe that is, uh, slated for our early May, um, our first meeting in May. That will, the, the person from CMRP C, in addition to Fiona, and other, probably other people from our board will be there. Um, and then we had the master plan meeting last evening, and just kind of continuing to talk about various chapters relative to the master plan, getting input from folks on the committee. Um, so that's, you know, moving forward. Um, it's a big undertaking, of course. I was pleased to be invited to the community reading, um, day over at North Grafton Elementary School. So, I thank my friend Rachel Murray, the librarian, for inviting me, and, um, that was lovely. And that was all. I was gonna bring up the shredding event, but thank you for doing it already.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Ms. Foley. Um, yeah, I went on the, um, uh, the, the site walkthrough on, on Snow Road. Um, I really appreciate that the developers, um, are providing those kind of walkthroughs, um, and keeping, you know, this board as well as the town, um, and the executive office of housing, and I'll never remember the rest of it, uh, the state.
E- E O H L C.
E O H L C, sure. Um, they're keeping everybody, um, connected, uh, and, and updated. In the future, uh, for those kind of walkthroughs, um, I really appreciated what Eastland did by marking out, like, where the roads were gonna go, where the buildings were gonna go. We did a little bit of wandering around, uh, trying to figure out where we were on the lot relative to what we were looking at on the map. Um, and so Eastland, I thought Eastland's, um, the way that they handled that by staking things out was real, for me, really useful to just be able to visualize the orientation, uh, of the buildings and, you know, other, um, elements of, of the development. Um, at least on the ground, um, it was really helpful for me to, to kind of see that. So, um, hopefully we can, uh, yeah, in future, uh, visits like that just, uh, indicate to these developers that that would be helpful, uh, for those taking the sidewalk, um, to just help guide us.
So, wouldn't the difference, wasn't the, with Eastland, that was for the general public, though. It was more of a, for neighbors and whatnot, for anyone. Versus this was, I thought, more specific to that, the person from the, um, department that came in.
E O H L C.
Yeah.
E O H.
Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Not that I'm defending that, that, uh, particular, um, whatever, company, but I think that that was, that's one thing. It was a different, um, thing. And then, of course, Pleasant Street is like wide open land too, so it's handier.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, yeah, I, I agree.
They do outreach, sorry, for the public as well.
I, I do too. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think we just, uh, need to continue with working to, working with the developers to try to give the town better information at every stage of the projects, uh, to make people, uh, better understand what's going on, what's being proposed, uh, all that. You know, um, we've had such a variety of approaches. Uh, each developer has a really different set of information for us and way of engaging with the town. And, um, I find, like, I really like, uh, Eastland's financial analysis. To me, that was really helpful and, um, you know, so, and I did like their public input. I thought that that was really important. I'd like to see all the developers do that, because ultimately, you know, these, uh, developments are going into neighborhoods and, um, so we, we want some public input, um, to help shape those things. And, you know, people have the opportunity to go to ZBA and, and, uh, engage with public commentary on these, um, as they're reviewed and um, and iterated, but, uh, you know, it's as much communication as we can do on these projects, uh, because, you know, there's, uh, understandably, a lot of concern in town on development, and, uh, particularly if it's a development that is, uh, you know, in close proximity to, to people. So, um, anyways, but I thought it was really good. Um, and, uh, yeah, it seemed like a really, a, a good place for it. Um, so I was, uh, yeah, glad to kind of go along to that. Um, alright, next up, we have, uh, Town Administrator Reports.
Yeah, I have a few things for you, um, today. Here we go. Um, so, as I've been doing, here's our kind of tally list. Um, Georgetown Road still in the design phase. Um, I am currently building a separate page. Um, you can go onto the website and, and see a page, um, dedicated to Georgetown Road. But, uh, I'm de- developing a project page that'll be a little bit more intuitive and a little more interactive. You can ask questions or look at the town's comments, um, so we can give more of an ongoing, uh, update on what's happening as opposed to, um, you know, the website's kind of static. We put the plan up and then it's just, the plan is there. So, um, I've been working on that kind of, uh, off and on over the past week. Um, and it's, it's, it's getting there. I think it's gonna be a good tool. Um, and then once I'm done with that, I will send it via, um, our Code Red system to everybody on Georgetown Road. They'll be able to go to the project page, as can any resident, but they'll be able to subscribe to any changes to that particular project. And then anytime we do anything, it sends them an email and says, hey, we've made a change. Uh, come look at it. So, I think that'll help with hu- communication there, um, which we, we've heard, uh, you know, on a number of different, uh, projects, but we did hear it at the AMA. Um, and so we're, we're working on it. Um, Millbury Street sidewalks, you just, uh, heard from Paul, so I'm not gonna belabor that. Um, Arpa sidewalks on North Street, he was here at the last meeting, so we know that the z- design is in, in progress. Um, you know, hopefully with some, uh, some movement there in the next month or so, that we can start the bidding process and, and so on and so forth. Uh, the Cupola project, uh, if you go by the library now, you'll see, uh, a, a good chunk of the scaffolding is up. Um, so there is a exterior stairwell, and I did not go by, uh, this afternoon, but they was gonna start laying the scaffolding on the roof around the, the Cupola. Um, so we're excited to see that. That's off and running. Um, and so we should start seeing some more, more movement there as well. Um, Rec, uh, we are full speed ahead with the Rec, uh, meeting with Westboro tomorrow to interview OPM, um, that's Owner's Project Manager, um, as part of our RFP process. So, once we select an OPM, um, then we go through the design phase, um, and then on to hiring a director and so on and so forth. So, um, making some good, good progress there now. Um, so I'm pretty happy with that. Um, ninety-five North Street has not gone the way that we had initially hoped it would. Um, so we are restructuring that. We need to go back in front of CPC and talk about the new plan and make sure that it falls within the scope of what they expect, uh, as well as what we believe, uh, town meeting looked at, and then decide, um, next steps of that process. But we did have a walkthrough last week, um, on the site. And, um, DPW is going to, throughout the summer, be doing a whole bunch of work on the site that was originally part of the scope to do, um, so that we could do it in a compressed timeframe. Um, cost being what they are, we've decided to do a lot of that in-house. So, um, they're going to be, um, conservation will be marking trails. Highway will be, or DPW will be cutting trails. They'll be mowing the fields for the Pollinator Meadow and the Grass Meadow. Um, doing some invasive removal, some chipping. Um, and so they'll be doing that, you know, rainy days or in between. You know, we get a lull in a project and can shed a couple of, of people to go do some work. So, that's good that, our current estimate is that saves us about two hundred thousand dollars on the project. Um, and then we are going to be looking at rerouting a couple of the boardwalk sections. Um, the boardwalks are beautiful, but kind of overbuilt and expensive. So, we had those as big, big alternates, and we're gonna, we're gonna shift away from that a little bit. Still ADA accessible, just not, you know, uh, the, some of them are on geo piers that are like two feet off the ground, and I'm sure they would be gorgeous, but you know, the geo piers are like three hundred dollars apiece, and there's forty of them, you know, so it's, it gets out of hand quick. So, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're trying to value engineer some of it so that we can still get the same, uh, feel out of the park. So, uh, it was nice. We spent a lot of time out there covered in ticks. It's just absolutely covered in ticks. Um, so it's gonna be a bad, bad year, just, just saying. Um, and then Norcross Park, we continue to do some, um, some work on that. Um, it is in full process. Everything is, um, is out. It's still mostly wrapped. It's really muddy. So, you know, there, we're kind of, uh, picking our way through that. We are also, uh, we added a fence to the project between the abutter and the playground, so it'll give a little more privacy to the abutter, but also more privacy to the families at the, uh, the playground. Uh, privacy is probably not the right word, but I think you understand what I'm, what I'm saying. Um, seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street, we are waiting for a conservation application, which we've been talking about. I did speak to them today. Um, they are going to be on site on April fourth, taking more, um, samples from the testing wells that they, that were dug, um, last year. So, that's really one of the last steps in completing that application process. So, continuing to see some, some motion there, which is good. Um, Five Millennium has actually already come in and, and, uh, pres- uh, applied for a permit, and their permit was issued in ten days, which is pretty rapid. So, that's, it's awesome. Um, so we should start seeing some movement on that site as well. Um, still waiting on carpet in the children's room. Um, we're still within the six to eight weeks, so I'm not panicking. But it would be, sure would be nice to get that off the, off the books. Um, I left Elmer Rock Estates Road Acceptance on here. Um, you're gonna see that on the warrant, uh, when we go to close it, uh, next week, or two weeks on this, on the sixteenth. Uh, UPS, we continue to have our kind of initial meet and greets. I would think that we're gonna start scheduling joint meetings with, uh, Grafton and the town of Shrewsbury this month, and those will be public outreach meetings, so the public can come see the orig- you know, the, the, the conceptual designs and talk through any concerns that they may have. Um, and so we're gonna hold those with our, with our neighbors in, in Shrewsbury. So, looking forward to that.
So, um, yeah, Mr. Berger, um, gave us a little bit of an update, uh, while we were doing the sidewalk on Snow Road. It sounded like, uh, we're, have a really good relationship to Shrewsbury on, you know, with all of the permitting and, um, uh, what's the other thing that we were?
The third-party peer review.
Peer review stuff, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I think you said everything for permitting was gonna come through Grafton. So, one point of contact, and then they would work through it with Shrewsbury.
Yeah, so it sounded like, uh, it's a really collaborative process, which, uh, oops, was great.
Yeah, I, I agree. We're, we're, uh, moving right along with that. Um, one twenty-four Wester- Westboro Road, they just announced, um, through Mass Development that the, uh, sale is now public, which means that the project is through the MIPA process and the purchase and sale process. Um, so we would, uh, expect to start seeing some movement on permitting in the next month or so. So, that was the, that was the hurdle in, in their timeline. Um, so we're looking forward to start seeing some, some movement there as well. Uh, fourteen Snow Road, you guys covered that, I think. Um, we continue to work with FinCom on the budget. Um, we have, uh, meetings starting up, uh, I think we're, next meeting is not gonna be till the twenty-fourth of April, and that'll be, um, uh, warrant review and finalize any questions on the budget and, and things like that. So, uh, feeling pretty good in that process. Um, town meeting prep is well underway. Will's got, uh, draft versions of the warrant put together. Um, continuing to build that document, and, uh, so feeling pretty good. Pretty good on our, our placement there. I think we're, we're well ahead of where we normally are, uh, which is good. And, uh, aside from, uh, resident petitions, which I don't, uh, weigh in on, um, it seems to be a fairly benign budget, uh, just kind of routine stuff, nothing. Nothing out of the ordinary. Um, so it'll be good, cause we've had a couple of busy ones. So, it'll be, be nice to get, get kind of the, uh, a, a normal one under the belt. Um, and then last but not least, um, so as, as Mark had mentioned, uh, kind of an offshoot from the Ask Me Anything, uh, it was brought to our attention some, um, illicit discharge from one of the developments in South Grafton. Um, I've been to the site twice. Um, once was kind of an initial meet and greet, and the second time I went was raining pretty heavily. Um, and was able to trace some of that back, uh, up into the, up into the woods. Um, but one of the things that came out of the, the conversation that's not just specific to this particular, um, this particular property, is that a lot of the stormwater, uh, complaints go to a whole bunch of different departments, and they're not centralized in any way, and it's really hard to know what, who's in charge of what and who's got a handle on it. And, uh, it's just one of those situations where if everybody's in charge, nobody's in charge. And it's just, it's just hard. I, I learned, um, through the Ask Me Anything that there was still a, a, a problem in, with the South Grafton site, which I thought had been rectified in the previous sprint. Um, so, in order to try to rectify that a little bit, what we're doing is we've created, um, I don't know what the heck to call it, but we're calling it the Stormwater Illicit Discharge, uh, Team, I guess we'll call it. Uh, but we created a, a email address called stormwater@grafton-ma.gov. Uh, we are currently linking that throughout the website, um, so that you'll have, whether you go to Planning Board or contact us, or Zoning Board, or Building Department, there'll be a little tickler that says this is how you get in touch with Stormwater people. Um, so I think that's gonna help, cause everybody will have eyes on the same problem. Cause a lot of these problems, especially with Stormwater, touch multiple departments. Um, similarly, uh, working with the, the group, uh, you know, if one of us gets a stormwater complaint, it goes into the, the group conversation, so that we're now all on that same page, and it doesn't either get lost or, um, you know, it, it gets taken up by the entire team, which has a broader set of, of expertise. You know, it it gets taken up by the entire team, which has a broader set of of expertise. Um, so I I think this is, I think this is good. I think we're headed in a better direction. Um, we've already, just on this one issue, we've had more back and forth than probably anyone that we've ever had. Um, with a whole bunch of different host of ideas as well as um. Uh, different jurisdictions and how you handle stormwater. And developers and who has what jurisdiction and what is the best leverage point to make sure that the problem gets resolved the correct way. As quickly as possible. So I I think it's, I think it's moving in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Of course.
And that's not trivial because what we found was the the individuals, just at this one single property. They didn't know who to get ahold. They were just reaching out to somebody at the town and. It wasn't, I don't think people purposely just ignore it or look in the other or feel that's gonna, he's, she's gonna get that. And just whatever, it just goes nowhere. But it it kind of goes into a little bit of a a black hole. And so. While results will absolutely matter in this case, we have to fix this problem and I know that you're working on it. Uh, the town should know that this is a, this is um, this is an attempt. This is more than an attempt. This is now action to become a little bit more efficient. As a, as an organization or as a town, as a municipality. So now they will, if, and this goes a little bit to some of the con- uh, conversations about a sign. Community engagement, getting people involved, helping them understand there's a town meeting or there's an email address to go to or. Any number of things that we want them to know about. This is a good example of making it more efficient and more and driving better accessibility. Because that was like half the problem. Like, hey, I don't know, I'm trying, no one's answering me, I don't know what to do. And all of a sudden, like you said, in the last two weeks. There's been more eyes on it, more conversation, more accountability and more attempts to bring a solution to it. Again, results matter. We have to fix the problem. Uh, because we're not done with that yet. But boy, this is a great, I think this is a great step and a great direction for people that live in this town.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. I I feel like, you know, a problem was identified and a group of people, not just Mark and I, but up here. We brought it here and then you guys kind of identified a potential solution, right?
Yep.
Um, so that's great because there's nothing worse for me. I feel like I'm out there listening to people or going on the property or what have you and hearing they're not getting it. So. And that was exactly that day. Yes, there's damage to the property for sure, but the two gentlemen's biggest, bigger beef was just not getting anything back. And just for the, um, can you just say it again? Stormwater at Grafton.
Can we work on the name too, by the way?
Well, the the email is Stormwater.
Yeah.
At Grafton hyphen.
That's cool.
So like every other email we have just Stormwater in front of it. Um, yeah, we'll we'll work. It's it's literally called illicit discharge.
It's all good.
I don't know. Uh, that wasn't the focus of what we're working on. We'll come up with something.
Can we change it to Ormwater S?
Like, yeah, Ormwater S, that's a good one. Um, yeah, maybe we'll call it the silt team. I don't know, we'll call it something.
Great.
Get t-shirts.
Uh, so.
But um.
On that topic though, um. Is there any discussion within that team about um, some consistent monitoring? I'm just aware of all the development happening across town. And is it possible for us to catch this stuff before we get a resident complaint by going out in large uh, storm events and just. Seeing what's happening, you know, to to keep the developers honest.
Yeah, so the this team's been around since yesterday. But we will. Um, that's part of the conversation is how do we, where's the follow-up? So we go out once, we meet with the developer, we say this is a problem. They say these are my resolves. We can't just leave it there. You have to go back and make sure the resolves are working. Um, because that doesn't always happen and it and it's it's easy to miss because you've got a lot of these. Projects going on and they're not just huge development projects. They're single family houses. They're. Uh, the the slope of the road changed, the drainage is backed up somewhere. It's, when it rains in Grafton. It rains in our office because it is a lot of calls about about water. So that's kind of. That that's that's another impetus for wanting to have this group of people because. We'll be able to, this, you know, conservation, this is more in your bailiwick. So that's your property and you'll go out for that. And then. Building this is in your area, you know. It touches the public way and then it becomes a DPW concern. You know, there's, there's a lot of that. So. Um, I think this is gonna be, I've said this before, water is is a, is a, a thing that Grafton's gonna deal with forever. Um, it's just the the nature of the topography of the town and as we get more development, that puts more pressure on the the natural solutions we have. Um, and so, you know, this is, this is something that's gonna, gonna be around forever. So. Hopefully this is a a step in the right direction and we can uh, utilize this as as much as we can. Alright, uh, lastly, and this is the same slide. Um, we're we're still fine on the budget. I'd just like to show this. Um, there's been no changes since we last met. Um, we are still uh, in the positive, which is good. Um, and we are currently working finalizing our health insurance number. Um, we just saw some movement today, so we do know that it will be sub five percent, which is. Fantastic rate in twenty twenty-four. I will, uh, yeah, yeah, in twenty fourteen, I'd be upset, but in twenty twenty-four, that's a, that's a good result. Um, so we're very happy with that and um, yeah, I think that's it for me unless anyone has any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I just have two questions. One, is there, are there photos anywhere? Do you, you know, of like the Norcross, like what it might look like or is that available?
Of North Street?
I. No, like.
Oh, oh, the playground? Yes.
Recreation maybe.
I believe it is. I haven't looked at it in quite some time, but I I I know that there's renderings up.
Okay.
Um.
I can look. And then. Uh, just to reiterate, the George Hills, so something's gonna go out via code red to the folks over there and they will respond. To opt in to getting these.
Yeah, so what it's gonna do is link them into our Financial Transparency Center, but I can send a link that's straight to the project page instead of. Getting dumped in the transparency center and then knowing you've got to go to projects and then find your project and go down.
Um, and then they'll be able to opt into updates.
Yep, there's a little, little thing right on next to it that says Georgetown Road, uh, repair, whatever I call it. Repaving and renovation project. And then it says subscribe here for notification.
Okay.
You click that and it, and it does it. Um, and it does, it does work pretty well. We have a significant amount of people that are doing that with the budget. Uh, interestingly enough, once I got into the backend to see that, there's more people than I would have expected. So. Um. So, yeah. Okay.
And I just have a que- a general question. I should know the answer because I did a couple of these, but for citizen petitions. Do they come through us at all? Or is that up to the the applicant or whoever's?
So they.
I mean, I know I went to all the boards.
Yeah, so they will be, the applicants are invited on the sixteenth to present.
Okay.
Those. So the board, the select board, and this is kind of a wonky thing in Grafton and and it's something that I've put. Um, or we'll be discussing more in depth with council. Um, so under, you know, Mass General Law Thirty-nine, Section Ten, it it gives you very clear ways to submit a citizen's petition. Um, but the municipality is supposed to be fairly hands-off once those, once we've verified that the signatures are 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 valid. Um. So Grafton has some language on their petition form that talks about, uh, you know, vetting it through the select board's office to see if it's actionable. And the municipality really should not be doing any of that. Um, and not because you want to be difficult, but because if the select board's office says it's not actionable and it is, or it was not actionable. Uh, and it isn't, or what, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
You get into a situation where you're now picking, you know, did you pick and choose? Was it, so it's, it, you you have to have a a pretty decent firewall between. The political side of it and the petitioning side of it. Um, and so we're gonna be looking at that. More in depth, uh, obviously now's not the the time to do it, but immediately following town meeting. Uh, but you will. The the petitions get submitted to the select board's office. We then hand them to the clerk to certify the signatures. Then they come back to the select board's offices and get put on the warrant. And then when we go to the sixteenth, which is the warrant date. They are given, the they, the petitioners are given the opportunity to come and explain to the board what they're doing and and why they're doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify. It's been a while. I did two in the past, but it's been a while since I did did them. So I just wanted to get that on my brain.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, alright. Um, next up we have correspondence. Did anybody have any correspondence that they wanted to discuss?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want a question on the Rushford and Sons, I think it was. Probably someone got back to those, that fella about. I think it's just a couple of questions about what are you gonna do in terms of permitting and what have you.
I, I would say yes, but let me just look at it. I'm I'm not good at the the name part of it. I know.
He was, he brought up just coming to Grafton, but then he kind of became more specific with apple tree, but then at the end, I can think he kind of opened it up again, just in general, like what he would have to do.
Yep, I will follow up, but I'm sure that we.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, anything else on correspondence?
Oh, so excuse me. Yes, we did.
Okay.
Uh, alright, then we are on to, we have no resignations, uh, public comments. Mr. Robbins, would you like to make a public comment?
And and not unless there's something you would like me to speak about.
Not in particular. Uh, do we have anybody online with their hand up?
You have no hands on film.
Okay, well then we are moving on.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
We're mov- moving to meeting minutes, yep.
Yep.
Move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from March the fifth and March the nineteenth of twenty twenty-four as written.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Often, aye. Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Uh, the motion carries. Uh, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All moves.
Oh.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, two motions in a second. Um, all those in favor, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Often, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you all.